Oh, that's strange. Yeah, so, uh, like, I came Saturday and I made sure it was pumping. At some point, it shut off between the time I was here at noon and Monday morning. And it was about two hundred and twenty-five. And not one ounce of chlorine. It was like, I was just here. It was running.
Yeah. So, you know, we'll get this installed too. It's gonna be one of those where it's a little field set, a little bit like a pitch running. You need your works, oh, no, now, we need to fix them.
At seven.
We'll chase them through.
At seven.
I think we're, we're gonna be a lot better than she had been.
Oh, yeah. Well, a lot of thanks to you staying on this stuff.
I'm trying.
Oh, yeah.
My name is. Department of Health and Sheen.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'll, I'll, uh, I'm gonna get the food to Scott and he'll get us a morning quote. Uh, awesome. Get started.
That'll be fine.
Mary, yes, microphone's off. We're gonna have a moment of silence. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and do roll call. Here.
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 Councilmember Zavala.
Yeah.
Councilmember Della Fuente.
Yeah.
I ask a question about that. If we're taking roll call for the January eleventh, why it? How, how are we doing that? We're doing January eleventh meeting right now, but we weren't here January eleventh.
Well, we're gonna approach it now, today.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we're gonna, uh, vote on the meeting agenda. We're gonna go ahead and, um, vote on the meeting agenda, um, for the CD. So, do we have any visitors' comments? First, we have to make a motion for the.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that. So, we make a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nina, Ruth? Josh? You there?
Yes, ma'am. Um, let me double check here. It doesn't appear that we have any visitors' comments online.
Okay. So, um, any visitors' comments from? Not, oh, yes, I would. Go ahead and, um, take the podium, state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Crystal. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the coffee shop owner. And I just wanted to address a potential community event that can possibly happen. If you're gonna be helpful. So, I would like to start maybe in May or April, a, um, community with. Farmers market, or I would say bizarre. I would hope to have it twice a month, maybe the second and fourth Saturday of the month. And, um, there was some issues due to parking, but I have resolved those issues. So, the, um, school district has okayed us to use that parking, and I do have confirmation of that. And then, this is just an outline of how the vendors would be set up. Do I have to?
Uh, you would have to give it to us, and we have to make copies for them? Or do you have copies for each one of them?
I do.
Okay, then they can just pass it around. To this council, I have any questions for?
Anybody have any questions for Crystal?
Andy?
So, it would be in the coffee shops parking lot, and, um, on the little map, it shows V one, V five, all the way through V ten. And the V stands for vendors. So, hopefully, we would have ten vendors, and then, um, ideally, I would contact residents of Mapton so that they're first picks. And then after that, then we would move on to setting site and review.
And how long do you plan for this tier end system?
Ideally, it would be every spring season, but if it continues into summer, that would also be great. And if we were concerned about, um, traffic through the coffee shop, the coffee shop would be closed during that time, and it would be open only for walkers. So, there wouldn't be any cars going through there.
So, do you, well, you're starting out with ten, so would there potentially be, would it be growing, do you think?
Um, I would hope so, and there's room for them to grow. I kind of just put them on the border, but we could essentially do gross if there wasn't enough people.
So, is it just like, um, walk, might be like vegetables and stuff like that, or is it gonna be like? Could be in big, uh?
I would say a little bit of everything. So, um, some people who sell these, I know that there's a resident in Mapton who sells them. And then, um, I know that there's a resident in, um, has a couple of Rotsie fans, and then a Rotsie self-weaponware. So, we'd start with them first and then the walk.
It would be our residents first before anybody.
Yeah. So, ideally, I would post on the map.
All right, thank you, Crystal. Thank you for bringing that. Now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. You got me there, Sylvia.
Oh, they have to call out the consent.
Okay. So, um, we need a motion and second it. Go ahead. We'd like to.
I'll make a motion that we pass the consent agenda, A through D. I second the motion.
So, it is, the motion has been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded by Vera and Diana. And? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? Okay, so we're gonna go on to approve the study session minutes for Tuesday, December twenty-eighth. Nope, we did that, okay. Um, so we go all the way down to?
What you say, all business, none.
Okay. New business? So, uh, for new business, we are going to be promoting, uh, our lateral officer, um, Gero to sergeant. Okay. We'll move that down. We're gonna go, um, to the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one, delegating voting general membership. Members and alternate for the Y B cog, page eight to nine. So, here we need to appoint, um, two new, or two council members, um, for this. So, um. Yeah, so we're gonna nominate. I nominate Andy.
In it.
No, not yet. We need another one, too.
I'm in it, Tudy.
So, on the record, that's what we're gonna do. It's gonna be Andy and Tudy, and so now we have to vote.
Um, okay. Aye. Mary?
Mary.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Now, you will have to approve the, uh, the resolution.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. Um.
Who's gonna make the motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve for, uh, Andy and Judy. For the planning commission findings, conclusions, and recommendations. I'll second it.
Just for the records, resolution twenty twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat that, right? Counselor?
Repeat it, please. Okay. Approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash three, planning commission finding, one oh one.
Well, here it's got. One second. We're doing January the eleventh. Just a second. Second?
Second it?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? Going on to, um, C.
No, B.
Okay. Approval of vendor agreement through, um, Yakima Nation Housing Authority, uh, page ten through nineteen. Is there any, um, any discussion on that? Vera, Tudy? Any discussion on it? You have any discussion on that?
Does, do the new council members understand what this is?
The Yakima Nation Housing? Um, yeah, Sylvia went over that a little bit ago with. So, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the vendor's agreement with Yakima Nation Housing Authority.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? So, we're gonna, uh, go on to C, which is the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two, updating banner bank signatures, adding deputy city. Sir, uh, Marcela Calvez, page twenty. The motion has been moved and.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Questions?
No.
Okay. That's the only change.
That's the only change.
Motion?
Motion has been moved.
By who?
I'll make a motion that we add Marcela. Are you listening, Frank?
Alvez? Alvez. Alvez.
Okay, will be added to the signature of our bank for the city.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? Any staff reports? One?
Nothing, uh, current, but I just wanna give a big thanks to the public horse department for their efforts throughout, uh, the days that we had snow. Uh, they put in a lot of hours, ensuring that the streets were safe for all of the citizens, and hopefully, we're done with it for this year. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Sylvia. Josh?
I, I have nothing at this time, ma'am, thank you.
And, um. Do you have staff report, or no, that's next day. No. No, just, it's been, been exciting three weeks. An emotional, an emotional one, but, um, I'm getting the hang of it slowly. Um, I've enjoyed working with the staff, um, learning a lot. I think we're both learning, you know, so, um, I've got a long ways to go still, but, um, with the help of them, we can get through this, I hope.
Thank you.
So, um, with that? Okay, so we'll adjourn, um, this meeting at seven fifteen. Okay, now, we're gonna go ahead and go into, uh, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Um, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting, um, toward at seven fifteen. Sylvia?
Yes.
We do the pledge allegiance again, or no?
No, I think we've already done that.
Okay, all right. So, uh, we're gonna go ahead and, um, vote on the meeting agenda.
Oh, yes, sorry about that. Oh, come on, yes. Right, so we have to do the moment.
Okay.
The moment of silence.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Alaralde.
Yeah.
Councilmembers Zavala. Councilmember Della Fuente.
Yeah.
So, we need to vote on the meeting agenda?
Consent.
I'll make the motion that we pass the meeting agenda. I second the motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? Any visitor comments? So, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. We're gonna, uh, go to A, approve the payroll warrant registered January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay. So, A, B, and C?
No, so you'd have to give them a five to adopt the consent.
Okay. So, we're gonna do the consent agenda and, um, go with discussion?
I'll make a motion, we pass the consent agenda, A through C. I second the motion.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? No hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? Your business? We're gonna go ahead and, um, the approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash two, approving the law enforcement assistance services, assistance. Assistance agreement between the city of Mapton and the Yakima County Sheriff's Office for Communication Services, page ten through thirteen. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion, we pass resolutions twenty twenty-two dash two.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? No hearing, none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved? With approval for resolution twenty twenty-two dash three, uh, planning commission findings, conclusions, and recommendations, page fourteen through fifteen. We're gonna table that?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not, we will just table that. Staff reports, one? Anything?
Need a report?
Okay. Josh?
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Sylvia? And I don't have any reports? Any coun, anybody?
I have a question. How did, has it been documented in, in, uh, how we canceled the meeting for January eleventh? What reasoning?
Sorry, I didn't prepare to address something.
Yeah, I just said at the very beginning.
The reason was, yes, but I wanna know, because I was, I heard two reasons. Mayor had Colby, and there was a lack of. Well, okay, I heard two reasonings, so I wanna know which one it is, and I want it on the record, which, what it was canceled for, because.
I did go on the record when we first started, and I apologize, and, um, it was, yeah, I, I, it went on the record when we already started.
So, it wasn't because of lack of a corn?
Yes, it was a lack of corn and due to illnesses.
So, Diana, you couldn't be here?
I was sick that day.
Andy? Were you sick that day, too?
No, but I wasn't sworn in yet.
You weren't sworn in tonight yet either, sorry. Mary? Were you sick?
No, I was not.
I wasn't sick. Tudy? Okay, I just want it to be noted on record that that meeting should have not been canceled, in my opinion.
Ask, uh, Jamin if he likes to speak.
Jamin, would you like to say something?
Okay. Yes, that's.
Make the update optional, but you've already gone through four meetings.
Sorry about that.
Just to keep you updated where we're at with our projects. First of all, um, wastewater projects are really outstanding wastewater projects. Juan and I work on some numbers for his middle, but it's not anything outstanding wastewater projects. Water projects, we'll, we'll continue to work on the city's updated water system plan. Basically, the water system plan will take current water usage over the last few years, um, project that with the expected population growth, and then say, okay, our water system can do, we have this much water system right now, is it gonna be able to meet ten and twenty year demands? Um, obviously, this is for a lot of money, this water system plan, and so it's in pretty good shape, um, with the exception of needing another well. Um, and so, we, we continue, continue to work on that water system plan, we're hoping that, um, we get an initial draft of the first position of that to the city for, you know, like, a month or so. And then, and then based on, and you see, back on that initial draft, it basically is the, here's the projections, here are the deficiencies. Me, a commissioner of the city, with network, Juan, and I heard some of his thoughts on some of the deficiencies. Then we do a capital improvement, like, here, here are projects, and here are financing plans. Because the city has put so much money into its water system plan recently, it was water system recently, that list of projects can be a lot shorter than it is for some cities. Some cities have a really long list. Sometimes we will put projects kind of out, you know, fifteen years out, um, so that if you end up needing it, it's already a plan, you already have a plan in place for doing it. One deficiency is needs another well, and so that's the other project we're working on. And we're working on well sevens for the city, and so the city's biggest efficiency is to use the well, that project is already in the works. Um, it was, I think, sixty, sixty-six percent grant funded from a couple of different funding packages. It's been, you know, in the works for two years to get, get the funding for the project. We're currently in the preliminary design, our hydrogeology is for, for designing, if possible, locations and designing the well layout. It'll be a two-step process. Initially, this year, we'll drill the well, we'll finish the design, we'll bid it, the drillers will give us bids. If you get a good drill, a good bid for the drilling, we'll move forward and they'll drill the well, we'll test it, gather information about it, pump test it, and then fast we. At the same time, we'll start designing what we call the flipping, which is the pump, the building, all of that. Um, and then that should get built next year. The idea is, we try to try to build the well this year, and then we can build the well house and equipment next year. So that, so that twenty, twenty twenty-three, end of year, like, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, we'll have, have an additional well, um, to help keep up, especially without some of the water to be. Transportation projects that are ultimately ongoing. Washington Street project is, is almost very, very, very close to being wrapped up. They, we had one construction issue, the contractor, I'm gonna repeat a little getting back to fix, but I think they fixed it, and there's just some loose ends. It basically the, the, at the ADA ramp, at Washington and, and the highway was deficient. And so, you had to work through a process, they replaced it, but it still needs to get filed off from last shot every week. Basically, it's done. Um, that was an all coolly grant funded project. The, kind of, current projects, then, are the Main Street project, North Main Street project, which is, you know, well into design. Originally, the city was scheduled for construction in twenty twenty-three. The way the funding got moved around, we got bumped up to twenty twenty-two. But right now, because North Main crosses the railroad, railroad moves its own pace, and there's only so much we can do. And that may, looks like it's gonna bump us back to twenty twenty-three. Railroad all comes too quickly, we may slide half up into twenty twenty-two, but we've been working with the mayor on, basically, letting a few other cities, um, bump up. But this year, because they're ready to go, while we wait for the railroad to. Move at their own pace.
Yeah.
With all due respect, but they don't have rest to work it.
Yeah.
That's North Main Street. South Main Street, the city was successful in getting funding to overlay a South Main Street. Um, we're just talking to Sylvia about that. Basically, there's some paperwork the city needs to sign with money agency. When they, city signs money agency, that's the free entry receiving grant function, money agency. Um, then we will have an engineering contract to do the design for you at, for the next couple of council meetings. Um, and our hope is then, to sign that through the spring and, and do that this summer. Maybe it'll slide and kind of go with North Main Street later, but initially, at least, we try to, you know, get it done, get it on the street, and get the contractor to, to overlay South Main. So, that would be main from South Street to Maple. Um, the other main, the North Main job was South Street to Washington. There, I remember there were five transportation hubs. Uh, the next one is the parking lot. Um, we did an internal review on, on the design, and they're updating it based on our internal review, and we'll have some of you guys soon review. Based on previous comments, we took out some of the greenery and added more parking spaces to increase the market capacity of the parking lot. It was initially ten, and I think it bumped to closer to twenty parking spaces. So, that will be the corner of Highway and South Street, right from the where the, where the existing kind of gravel lot there. Basically, this will take a lot, put sidewalk in front of it, a bus, a bus cab. For the people that want a carpool from Mapton, their car there, and do all kinds of lighting. And, and gravel and stuff around it to make it, make it look nice. So, again, we did a hard internal review a couple of weeks ago, and I think the project's been planning to have, uh, immediate development based on that, for you guys to review. To make sure that. Again, that, that project is grant funded between county funding. Finally, the city is finalized for some additional funding from a program called Complete Streets. Um, and so, we basically have to, they're, they're smallish projects, they're different, different respective projects. Um, and they will choose to fund to the city, um, city's initial plan, we get one of the larger pots. They had sidewalk along North Street from main all the way to the highway, the idea is the housing development. Over there, it was kind of piecing together and extending to downtown core, towards the, um, the promenade area as well. And so, that is still, we're paying for some of the funding, um, but, uh, our transportation guys are working on the plan then to get. You have to, city basically is in, through the finalized, you know, the work plan, and what the city would like to do with the funding. But leave that is all the currently outstanding projects. One other project I'm working with Juan is a few modifications for the coordination system, which will help, help with some things we've been talking about for a while. I'll talk to a contractor today that, that they helped us out. Help with some things we've been talking about for a while, and talked to a contractor today that they helped us out. So other than that, that's... Kind of talk fast, give you... Questions? I am very happy to answer any questions.
Any question? He did it in six minutes. No, I don't have any questions. Anybody? Okay. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and go back to... I'll have Victor come up. So with that, we are gonna adjourn the meeting at 7:30.